It is 5:15 on Monday, January 22nd, 2018, and the Carroll City Council meeting is now in session. Will everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please note everyone is in attendance. And start with the consent agenda, which is approval of the minutes of the January 8th meeting, approval of bills and claims, and we have one appointment, Joan Rudden, to the Historical Preservation Commission, three-year term to expire 12/31/20. Need a motion to approve?
So moved.
There's a motion in a second.
Yes.
Dave, yes.
Yes.
Fleschner.
Yes.
Haley.
Yes.
Dirk.
Yes.
Simon.
Yes.
Approved.
Thank you. Are there any oral requests and communications from the audience this evening? If not, then we will move to our first item, is the proclamation for Carroll Schools Week, January 28th through February 3rd, 2018. And our proclamation states, whereas Catholic schools produce students strongly dedicated to their faith, values, families, and communities rich in spiritual character and moral development, educating mind, body, and soul; and whereas Catholic schools in Iowa are recognized for their academic excellence and their ability to provide students with an exceptional and values-added scholastic experience; and whereas Catholic schools provide K through 12 educational choice empowering parents with their primary responsibility for educating their children; and whereas our local Kemper Catholic School System is known as an important economic asset to the city, being a top-10 employer, providing key tax savings for citizens; and whereas Catholic Schools Week is observed annually, and the 2018 theme is Catholic Schools Learn, Serve, Lead, Succeed. Now therefore, I, Eric P. Jensen, Mayor of the City of Carroll, do hereby proclaim the period between January 28th, 2015, through February 2nd, 2018, as Catholic Schools Week in Carroll, Iowa. Would you like this, John?
Thank you.
You have your very welcome. Thank you.
We appreciate everything the city does, homecoming parade, the traffic, and baseball stadium, obviously, and all those things that we take for granted, the city, so we're proud to have the choice of schools that a lot of towns like Carroll don't have that choice, and it really makes this town stronger, we appreciate it.
Appreciate it all here.
Thank you for your support.
Thanks.
Did you need a picture?
Um, if you have, yeah, we'll find actually.
That's fine. We should do that right away. Okay. Our first, uh, the next item on the agenda is ordinances, and we have a rezoning request this evening, and it is 5:19. I'll open a public hearing, and Mike.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Lee Pleasure, President of Playcore Inc., has submitted a request for approval for application of preliminary and final plats to be named Playcore subdivision. Additionally, a request for approval for rezoning for the southwest portion of the proposed Lot C from A2 to I2, so that the entire lot is zoned I2, has also been submitted. The extreme southwest corner of the property is actually outside the city limits and has never been annexed, and due to the location of a bridge abutment, city staff would suggest that we avoid annexing that, but at the very least, making the entire property zone consistently seems reasonable. Since this property is within our two-mile review area, the city council does review the entire plat, both inside and outside, along with the rezoning request. The plat contains 11.45 acres of land located between U.S. Highway 30 at the northeast core, southwest down to West 6th Street, and it's behind the Kraus Crossing Shopping Center. The property in our comprehensive plan is identified as general industrial, and the development subdivision consists of two industrial lots. Lot B, where Kraus Trucking is today, is 7.9 acres in size, and Lot C is 3.55 acres in size, and both lots meet the minimum requirements for I2 zoning. There are no proposed right-of-way or streets proposed as for this subdivision. Lot B will continue to have access to U.S. Highway 30 frontage there with a possible future connection to West 6th Street, and Lot C will have access only to West 6th Street. Additionally, no utilities are proposed with this site development, but will be served by City of Carroll Water Sewer and Storm Sewer. The Planning and Zoning Commission did review this at their January 10th, 2018 meeting and recommended that the city council approve the rezoning of the southwest portion of Lot C from A2 Agricultural District to I2 General Industrial District, and to approve the Playcore subdivision preliminary and final plats. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions the council may have.
So the bridge abutment will not be in this, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
And it's situated within the right-of-way of West 6th Street, so it's not on this property either.
Who owns that abutment, sorry?
Well, I would assume it would be county-owned at this point.
Any questions from the audience?
This is a public hearing for rezoning herself, okay.
Yep. So I need to then, any other questions? If not, I will, it's 5:22, we'll close the public hearing. Any other questions? If not, since this is an ordinance, we'll have to waive three readings, correct?
If that's what you choose to do, yeah.
So I need a motion to approve the rezoning of, the rezoning request of A through 2 Agriculture District to I1 General Industrial District, and then the Playcore subdivision preliminary and final plats. Is that correct?
We'll do a separate.
Want to do those?
Yeah.
Do the ordinance first, correct.
So we need to waive all three. Wave the, waive the readings?
Yeah.
I'd move to waive all three readings.
Second.
There's a motion in a second to waive all three readings. Simon?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Dirk?
Yes.
Fleschner?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Motion's approved.
And then I need a motion to approve the Playcore subdivision preliminary and final plats, and that is a resolution, correct?
Now we have to.
Oh, we got to.
Move to adopt the ordinance.
Adopt the ordinance.
I move, second.
There's a motion in a second to adopt the ordinance. Dirk?
Yes.
Simon?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Fleschner?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Motion is adopted.
Now the motion to approve the resolution.
Yes, we'll do them separately, first the preliminary, then.
Oh, we're going to do them separately? Okay, okay.
Here, I think I can do that. I moved to rezone the southwest portion of Lot C from an A2 Agricultural District to an I2 General Industrial District as recommended by the Planning and Zoning Commission.
You just did that.
Oh geez, I'm sorry, I got my notes wrong.
Preliminary plat.
I have, need a, need a resolution to approve the preliminary plat.
Yeah.
I'd move to approve the preliminary plat. See, we're all getting balled up tonight, aren't we?
It's okay.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion in a second for the preliminary plat. Fleschner?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
Dirk?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Simon?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Fleschner?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
Motion's approved.
Thank you.
We survived that. Now I'll do the next one.
The next one is resolutions, and it's the Corwes Family Subdivision, preliminary and final plat, and Mike.
Thank you. Laverne Corwes and the trustee as a Corwes Family Trust has submitted a request for approval for application for preliminary and final plat, meaning Corwes Family Subdivision. The plat contains 20 acres of land and is located on the west side of Kitty Hawk Avenue, just north of Jorgensen Trucking Equipment. The property is outside the corporate limits for the City of Carroll, however, it's within our two-mile review area. The property is identified in the comprehensive plan as agriculture, and the existing zoning is A2 Agricultural District. The development, the proposed development consists of three single-family lots. Lot 1 is 10 acres in size with an existing single-family home on the property, and the south two lots are each five acres in size. The lots meet the minimum requirement for single-family residential. No streets or right-of-way are proposed as part of the development, all lots will have access off Kitty Hawk. The remnant property, which is located west of Kitty Hawk in these lots, will have access via strip, a 30-foot wide strip to Kitty Hawk on land directly south of Lot 3. While this meets the minimum requirements for access, since it is less than 50 feet in width, the remain, remnant property will not be permitted to be resubdivided in the future. There are no city utilities proposed with this development, and West Central Iowa Rural Water will serve each of the lots, and Septic will be used for sanitary. The Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed this plat at their January 10th, 2018 meeting and recommended that the city council approve the Corwes Family Subdivision preliminary and final plats. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions the council may have.
Does West Central have to come to us yet, or that's already done?
Nope. Well, from the existing house, that's probably already done, I would assume they'll have to come with the other two.
They'll have to come with the other two, okay. Any other questions for Mike? If not, I'll need a motion to accept the Corwes Family Subdivision preliminary plat as recommended by the Planning and Zoning Commission.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion in a second. Simon?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
And I need to have a motion to approve the Corwes Family Subdivision final plat as recommended by the Planning and Zoning Commission.
So moved. Second.
There's a motion in a second. Simon?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Fleschner?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Thank you. The next item is the Contract for Professional Services Northwest Park Pickleball Court Complex, 2018, and Jack, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Before you tonight is the proposal from FEH to help design the pickleball courts, and the recommendation would be to remove, um, right now there's about five inches of concrete and two and a half inches of asphalt, remove all that, redo the dirt work, try to improve the drainage through that area, and come back and put in a surface for pickleball courts. We can get six pickleball courts onto those two tennis courts, and Mike and I, we visited a complex in Minnesota, southern Minnesota, probably about six months ago, and this was a similar setup where they had two tennis courts, which is generally about 100 by 120 feet is the fencing area for two tennis courts, and they converted their two courts into six pickleball courts, three and three, and then there was a divider, a short four-foot fence in between, so the balls don't go in between the courts as much as, um, if they weren't there. So, uh, we're kind of mimicking this style, uh, design, so, um, this is one of your priorities for the next, next year, so we will, uh, get a contract with FEH, they would start designing, uh, if, if we get the okay soon, um, generally, they, um, they'll design and we'll pay in July, is generally how it usually works with, um, if we give them enough notice. And then construction, uh, late summer, early fall, if you like that timeframe for this project.
So, Jack, do you take away the entire court?
Tear out everything, redo the dirt work.
Throw out the dirt, and then they put it back up.
Yep, yep, and it'd be pickleball courts, and that would put us down to eight tennis courts. Before we did the six, we were at nine, um, so I think eight's would be fine.
So they won't be.
For our community.
Those, the pickleball courts, that'll be dedicated strictly for pickleball?
Pickleball, yep.
Now, if that were to become something that doesn't occur in 10 years, we could re-convert them back to tennis courts, too.
Pull out the middle fence, fill that area, repaint them.
Okay.
If you, if you, if we go back and do what my hopes would be, is we pour the five inches of concrete and then put the two and a half inches of asphalt, you'll have great, you'll have really good pickleball courts, and you'd be able to put tennis.
And if you're taking the tennis courts out completely, is there any reason to move the pickleball courts at all? Obviously, we're down to nothing, and right where the tennis courts are situated is fine? Is there any reason to consider moving them if you'd be here and there, anything like that?
No.
No?
No.
And that basketball court that's there?
Yep.
Remains as is, and I'm not sure if that's impact and usable at this time, I believe that, I've seen people play.
The people are playing, and the concrete's fine for.
Is that concrete all right?
Yeah.
Okay, so we don't need to investigate doing that at the same time or anything?
I wouldn't, you know, I would say keep the same fence. Originally, I thought maybe you would put new fence, but I walked around, looked at it, two new gates, we'd probably need new gates on them, they're pretty shot.
You do, yeah, the one's broken.
Yeah, so, you'd probably put just new gates, but leave the fence, in my understanding, Randy was here the last time, they took down one side of the, uh, fence, came in and did all the work, and put new poles up, or save the poles, and re-put the fence up.
I was lighting there.
Yeah.
Lighting's shot, yeah.
So, no lights at all for these?
I would say no lights.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, no.
That's fine.
If we're investing lights, let's go to Grand Park where the tennis courts are.
Sure.
We light those four. You still have lit courts down at Rolling Hills, um, so I think that'd be, and I don't think you'd need to light all six tennis courts, you'd do the bank of four, or the bank of two, probably the bank of four, and then you'd be done, you wouldn't have to do all six courts, it's nothing.
Well, some of them start setting in July until almost 9 o'clock.
Yeah, yeah.
I think they play primarily in the early morning, though, too, don't they?
Do they do that?
Yeah, yeah, it's a good.
5:53, isn't it?
Yep, yeah.
Was this presented to the park and rec board?
Yes.
And their reply was?
To move forward with pickleball courts.
Okay.
Now, I thought when we discussed pickleball courts, we talked about putting them further to the south on the park, down on the lower part where there was more parking. Did I misunderstand that?
No, no, they had asked, um, that was one of the locations they were looking at, but I, my feeling is you repurpose that area that's been used, you, we are looking at a sidewalk in this project, part of their fees will be at a sidewalk, but you, you try to keep the park to open space as much as possible, and that's a good, that's a good area.
You're talking about a sidewalk from the parking south, not up on the top of the hill here. Most people park on the top of the hill.
Most people mark, walk down, we'll see if we can get the slope, that would be the, and what kind of cost that would be, trying to make it one-to-one, but I don't know if that'll be possible, but, um, we, you'd still want one up on top, bring it down, because that's where most of the people park. People park below or using the playground or the shelter, overfill the shelter area, soccer in the spring, there'll be soccer there, too.
So are you considering a rework of the parking area up top, or?
No.
No?
No, not this.
Hey, Randy, if they did a sidewalk from the street down, would that have to meet certain ADA requirements then, too?
Yes, it would.
Okay.
So that's why you start from the parking lot and work your way back.
Jack, what does it mean, describe what you mean by ADA accessible, is that with the railing, or what, certain width, or what, how would it be different from just not ADA accessible?
Your gates, you make sure they get into the gates area.
Oh, okay, okay, no, I think it's a good idea, I just wondered what it entailed.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions for Jack? If not, I'll need a motion to approve the letter agreement with FEH Design for the Northwest Park Pickleball Court Complex for the total architectural lump sum fee of $18,525.
So moved. Second.
There is a motion in a second. Fleschner?
Yes.
Dirk?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Simon?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Thank you. The next item is the Contract for Professional Services, Grand Park Recreation District, capital improvement planning, 2018, and Jack.
Thank you. We had the, uh, we had a group together to do that issue study, that's presented to you for the Grand Park District, and you've seen some of the elements of that with the baseball stadium, and hopefully the football field, um, is part of that study, and this is moving that for, that next process forward. We do need to work with a professional engineer firm, ISU, we've done what basically they can do at this point, and what their students and everything else that they are a part of, so we need to get a professional, um, another professional engineer firm, and a lot of you have met Craig Erickson with FEH, this is his background, he's really good at this, he has a lot of experience, he would head this, most likely this group, along with Emily, and she wanted to be here tonight, but due to the weather, it just wasn't, wasn't good. And we want to start looking at the Grand Park area, the drainage area, the ditch area, making improvements there, making improvements to the parking, and just tying in, hopefully we have a theme for that area. What, what FEH will help us with is, my idea would be, we'd get a committee back together of those members that we had from Grand Park originally, um, we probably have, what, about 20, Misty was on that, Laverne was on that, so my hopes, we get some of the council again, a couple Parks Board members, and then the interested parties, Barry Bruner, that group, and get together, and we'll meet with Shive, and I think we want to take this proposal, look at sections of it, and a timeline, and a cost estimate for all the things that we really want to see down that area, as far as benches, signage, the drainage area, improve the parking, um, just really make that a district is, is what our hopes are, and really what the community wanted to see, I don't miss the, you can mention anything you want, or Laverne, there's been a lot of talk about the plan, and there's, there's some interest to see, to see that district move forward. And this is really a big first step, I think Shive has a lot of experience, and Craig does, we've worked with him, we know him well, um, you'll have a great product. So you'll have a, a master plan to, for future planning and budgets, and, and an idea of how you want to move forward with those, and it'll give us a chance out of public, give the input.
Jack, are you planning to engage the two schools and DMAC on that committee, or are they part of that already?
Well, we'll probably extend an offer, but since, most of it's going to be in Grand Park, which is our, our area, I could see some benefit to definitely DMAC, too, to, um, engage them, see if there's things that they, um, have, they have a bigger, you know, presence down there, too, so you might ask DMAC first, but if the school districts want to be a part of it, I'd definitely extend it out to them.
I think since they're.
They've paid part of that.
They, they have been from the start.
Yeah, they have, they were in original, yes.
But since they paid part of that, I, for ISU.
Right, yeah. They've, they've been at the meetings. I just want to make sure that we extend that invitation back to them and keep them going with us.
And all the, all the reports and everything from that Iowa State study will be available for the architect to use also?
It's been forwarded to Craig, he's reviewed it.
Okay.
And he was up with Mike and I one day, and we walked the park, and, um, he's already given us some suggestions, ideas to think about, especially that drainage. I know there's some interest in seeing the parking done first, the parking and that drainage area, you got the beautiful stadium, the beautiful rec center, that area to me is an eyesore, I'd like to see that drainage area be.
Talk about what the drainage, be specific, like where you mean.
The overgrown, uh.
Okay, just talk about the.
Very grassy.
Well, I'll call it crick.
Yeah, crick, yeah. Try to make that, you know, um, nicer looking, and just improve the environment in that area. Won't be inexpensive, but it'd be nice to improve that, and the parking, obviously, is a component of it.
And just throwing it out there, is the timing for this right, and the reason I say that is, we don't know what the final concept of the stadium's going to look like, we know what the idea is, but we don't know what the stadium's going to look like, we're not, with the Highway 30, um, provisions down there, is this the right time to be engaging them for, for plans? Or we'd be better off to wait till some of that stuff is done and in place?
I guess if I could interject a little bit, I, I think we know at least the direction where the stadium's going, because it's under construction, and we know what the plans are for the improvements in Highway 30 that's been let, and, so I, I think we have a lot of the guts that can help guide us. Now, there may be some tweaks with the stadium as they complete construction, but, um, you know, I always say it's, you know, the best time to plan is, you know, before everything is actually set in stone.
But the footprint for the football field won't change any?
No.
No.
They're, they're landlocked, they can't do much there.
I think the other thing that I would say is super important will be, you know, you talk about the crick bed, and you talk about the drainage, and.
Parking.
The parking, but also fundamentally the walking areas, because traffic gets so crazy down there, and you really need to make that a safer place, there are so many bodies moving around that, you know, one of the things that was thrown out of those conversations was to make a lot less driving traffic in between all of those facilities, and we really need to look hard at that.
Yep.
Get that problem aid going, and talking about the walking patterns of people, because there's just a lot of it.
Sure.
Yeah, you know, you go to a football game, after it's, after the game's over with, and everybody's trying to get out of there, try to get across the highway, although the fire department does do a really great job.
Yep.
Making sure to cut the traffic off so people can get through there.
I think Iowa State did a pretty good job of taking our dreams and putting it into paper and something we can understand.
Any other questions for Jack? If not, I need a motion to approve the letter agreement with Shive Hattery for the Grand Park Recreation District Capital Improvement Planning Services for the total architectural lump sum fee of $27,000.
So moved. Second.
There's a motion in a second. Simon?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
Dirk?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Thank you. The next item is the Public Highway Endgrade Crossing Agreement with Union Pacific Railroad, and Jack?
Thank you, Mayor. This is from our trails program on the south side of town, um, I'm sure most of you've been down there and saw where it stopped on both sides, that was because we didn't have the agreement with the UP, we do have that agreement in front of you, um, we pulled that project of the trail part out of the, out of the contract that we had originally, so there's, there'd be two options, two options I would suggest, I'm sure there's others, but if we do another trail project, to add it to that trail project, that could be sometime, or the other option would be Randy has offered, um, talked with the streets about pouring those two areas, what they would do is they'd pour up two of the railroad tracks, but the work in between the tracks will be done by the railroad, that's your $17,297, um, and we can do that, uh, with Randy's crew when they're available, hopefully the early spring, um, and then railroad, they would coordinate on their schedule, so, they, they do know our timeframe and what we're doing, so, um, it'll be a coordination channel, but there's a ton of pages to it, to the contract, um, but that's basically, in a nutshell, what we need to do to get it moving forward. Dave has reviewed it and didn't see anything other than a couple typos that we did get changed, um, so it's approved his, uh, recommendation, so.
I don't mean to put you on the spot, David, I had a couple questions on this, on the maintenance and repairs. It, it talks about the entire crossing area, or if there's repair to that, we just do the, we'll just do the apron up to the railroad track, we don't do anything with the railroad track, but I think.
Right, right, and they won't let us.
Right.
Yeah, we're responsible.
So if there's a, if part of the railroad track comes apart, they take care of it at their expense?
They'll take care of it.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. I guess, I just want to make sure I was. the apron up to the tracks that we're going to do, if that falls apart, that's our responsibility to take care of.
Right.
Okay.
So, as a follow-on question, liability one is, what if, what if it cracks or something between there, or somebody gets injured? Do we maintain liability for that, or is it whatever?
I think it's ours.
Yeah.
Yeah, they have an indemnity clause in there.
That's what I
They always do, Mike.
That's what I was thinking. That's what I was, how I was reading that.
So we've got to put our eyes on it.
The railroad tends to get a great deal on some of these things.
Yeah. That's what I thought I was reading, so, okay.
And when we, that estimated cost to the Union Pacific, is, they gave us that figure?
Yes.
Okay.
And that's something we didn't know when we were doing plans for.
Right.
But they, they're willing to work with us on that too?
Yeah.
For letting us have the access to it. And then they'll provide all the other, the flagging, if the, they need to have the train stop?
Yep.
They will do that?
Yeah, they'll do the flagging, and we'll pay for it.
But we pay for it, right. That's what I thought I would do. Okay.
Their union rates.
So keep them off the railroad track, Randy.
Any other questions for Jack?
There's no crossing arms that go down and up for that, is there?
No.
So pedestrians have to just observe the
The other crossing.
The other crossing gates that are for the cars.
That's what you see mostly when you're on the trail, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Once in a while, you'll see the others.
I thought at one time, didn't they have pedestrian gates on Main Street?
Had them on all crossings.
They had them on all crossings, I thought at one time, yeah. Any other questions for Jack, or Randy, or Dave, I guess for that matter? If not, I need a motion to approve the Public Highway at Grade Crossing Agreement with Union Pacific Railroad Company for the connection of the existing trail.
So moved. Second.
There's a motion in a second? Cott?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Dirk?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Base?
Yes.
Fluschner?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Thank you. We'll start with the report. And the next item is the report. Susan Gerlock could not be here for the weather, on the PFM general obligation bonding scenarios. Mike said he would provide us some information that he can start with, and I think we'll have Suzanne come and start her at the beginning of the next meeting, next Monday. So she can kind of go through that all over again if we can, so.
Yeah, so we'll just defer action, or table action on this to the 29th, if that's okay.
Bonding scenario, okay.
Do we need to vote to table?
We need a formal
Table?
To table that.
Do we need a motion to table?
I'd go ahead.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to table that until
Okay.
Our next meeting on January 29th.
I'll second that motion.
There's a motion in a second? Base?
Yes.
Fluschner?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Cott?
Yes.
Dirk?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Base?
Yes.
Fluschner?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Thank you. And we'll move to the 2019 through 2023 Capital Improvement Plan. And Mike?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Tonight is the first chance the council's had to review the 2019-2023 Capital Improvement Plan, or CIP for short. The City of Carroll has been completing CIP's budgets for more than a decade now. And the proposed CIP takes into consideration the annual planning session the council had, functional needs identified by staff, and citizens in public through public comments. The CIP provides an opportunity to implement all of these priorities into current, upcoming, and future budgets. As such, the fiscal year 2019 column of the CIP has been incorporated into the fiscal 2019 budget proposals that were actually distributed tonight to the council. Funding for, funding sources are identified for all the proposed projects for the, through the next five years, with the exception of four. Partial funding is identified for the Library City Hall remodeling, golf shed, Grand Park revitalization project, and partial funding for the street maintenance building. Other than these projects without identified funding sources, the proposed funding is projected to leave adequate balances in funding sources, whether it be cash on hand or bonding authority, and is projected that the current bond debt service levies would not increase to meet principal and interest payments under council voted authority. There are a few things I do want to highlight tonight. First, with the Library City Hall project, it shows an undetermined funding amount of $946,264. City staff requested and received an update last week from the foundation on their fundraising efforts. The foundation stated that they now have pledges total of $1,578,963.31. That includes $945,570.60 of cash on hand for the project, and $633,392.71 in pledges yet to be received. This undetermined funding represents the difference between the $2.5 million they have stated they will raise for the project and what they have raised so far, plus a few other incidentals. I would also note that the foundation received news today of another $60,000 grant that they have been awarded, which was not included in their update from last week. So that brings the foundation's fundraising total to $1.638 million.
Was that 60 or 16?
60.
60?
60.
Six is zero?
Yeah, 60,000. Yeah, sorry. So, any questions on the Library City Hall portion of the CIP? Okay. Certainly, if there's more questions later, we can discuss them. The CIP and the FY 2019 budget that's been distributed tonight also outlines a plan to continue to save money for the street maintenance building project, with the goal of financing the $4.955 million project with a debt issuance in 2020 of $700,000 or less to avoid the need for a referendum on the debt issuance. Even with this plan, the CIP that's been distributed tonight shows a funding gap of $417,500 for the project, and staff does continue to look for ways to fill this funding gap. Council specifically asked to discuss this and provide guidance to staff if this is the approach the council would like us to proceed with. The council is requested to consider approving a motion this evening to adopt the 2019-2023 Capital Improvement Plan. It's also important to note that the CIP can be changed at any time, including with the approval of the FY 2019 budget by a simple motion of the council. With that, staff is more than happy to discuss any of the elements in the CIP tonight. I'll be happy to take questions.
You're talking about that we can change by vote anything. And once we extend any funds toward this, then never a problem to change anything down the road.
Correct. So, I mean, the CIP is, is used kind of as a planning document, guidance. It helps us formulate the budget book that you see before you this evening. So certainly, as we go through the budget process, you can change stuff, even after you approve the CIP budget. If there's a project, until you commit the funds to, and commit to the project, you can always change your mind. It just helps us plan out future expenditures within the revenues we receive as a city.
The $407,000 shortfall in the maintenance garage, how long do you have, period of time before you have to try and find that revenue?
We'd want to find it within the 2020 fiscal year budget, if we're going to proceed with construction during that time, which is currently outlined in the CIP. Or we'd have to, an alternative would be to go for a citizen referendum
Yeah.
And request additional authority to issue debt.
Yep.
I guess I have my same concerns I had a few years ago. I gave, I gave this situation, the maintenance building to me is a necessity. It's a part of getting, handling and taking care of our infrastructure. We need to get moving on it. We have that $417,000 gap in funding. I mined through a lot of places to come up with some ideas. I have some, but it bothers me that we're at that $700,000 threshold, right before you trigger a referendum. In our planning documents, as well as the current budget we're operating under, we show a citizen vote for 1.9 million. Now, I know a capital, CIP is a plan in progress. It's not carved in stone. If, it would not bother me if, if we could find the 417,5, as well as additional funds to get well below the 700,000. But people want to vote. I'm a broken record. I brought this up about three years ago. People do want to vote on these projects. And I'm thinking, if we have this gap in funding, and we don't want to cannibalize other projects, maybe we should look at what would be the impact, and this would be for Suzanne, for us just to add that gap. Or could we find a way to decrease that gap and add whatever we cannot find, like the balance, maybe, you know, we could come up with a couple hundred thousand, and think about needs versus wants, and come up with some more money to allocate. So we, we need to get going on this. And if we have a vote, that means we need to get going on it in 18. I looked up the dates. And I, I just believe if we want this, if we want to get this in motion and get it done, it is a vital project. It's long overdue. I really truly believe it would be worth looking into increasing the debt issuance, see the impact on our levy. But I also think we could come up with some ideas to keep that, the levy, or pardon me, the, the debt low. And I believe we really could get a positive vote for this project. If we could keep the, you know, keep the, the fire truck, and maybe we could get the amount we go into debt for to around 1.2, 1.3, send it to a vote. I, I truly believe it would be successful. I know in our past citizen survey, only about 10 or 11% of the public said, "Don't fund it." They were very supportive of the project. I went back and looked. So I, I truly believe, I, I do not feel comfortable just getting right to that cusp and not allowing a vote, especially when we have this, you know, $400,000 gap. So, very quickly, I looked at some of our projects, and I'm thinking, you know, I see this as a need, not a want. I mean, we need it. The sooner the better. And I, I just was wondering what the rest of you would think, or maybe you could come up with some other ideas, to get the, the amount we go into debt for, for a vote, down to about 1.2, 1.3? Because we've saved, Mike, didn't you tell me, us, over 2 million we have in the fund for the maintenance building? We have over 2 million.
We have a little over 2 million in the fund.
Yeah. And we, and I looked, I mean, Randy has put together his schedule, design in July of 18, final design December, et cetera, et cetera, begin construction July, July of 19. I don't know. I have a couple ideas in the capital improvement plan, and, and I'm just throwing it out there. Maybe you have better ideas. I don't know. I'm really agonized over this. But I have got to support a citizen vote. That's what we had in our planning documents. That's what we have in the current budget. And I
But that can change, right?
Yeah, it can. It can. It's not carved in stone. But, I mean, you know, that was a month ago, and then it shows up in our CIP that we are not going to do a vote. So I was surprised. But what would you think, if you go to funding source, projects by funding source, and you go to, to the general fund levy, and we have 375 for the maintenance building, we're, we're undecided on the corridor signs, so could we push that back a year so that we can help get the maintenance building going? We have in the general fund levy for the CIP, 125,000 for corridor entry features, and then 50,000 for sidewalks.
The sidewalks is our ADA compliance plan.
Oh, is that the curb cutout?
I would consider
Okay, I went back and looked. So you're, okay?
And
That's for accident.
Do we still have the 125 for corridor entries in the general fund?
That's
Did we end up putting that back in?
Yes, what's, yes, that's what's
I'm looking at the
Okay, because we went back and forth on that, so I'm just asking
It's the CIP that we're looking at. I don't know. I'm just looking at ways to reduce the amount, because I really truly believe we need to send it to a vote.
Can I, can I ask you a question?
Yeah, yeah.
Just, because usually, I mean, you, I hear more from people about voting when it's a situation that's been up and down, back and forth. When it's something that's needed, like you're saying, this building, it's, we need it. We, we all feel like we need it. I don't get people talking to me about wanting to vote for something like that.
Oh, I get
It's needed, and they, they want me to speak up and say, "Vote for this."
I think there's a contingent that believes that. I just know when I ran for reelection, I heard it over and over again. And that's why that was a part of my campaign, because that's what I was hearing from the public. I, I, Misty, I don't know. That's what I have heard.
I'm just asking.
I just, right. No, no, I'm sure
Say, because if you can change
We all hear different things, yeah. I just would like to reduce that 417,000 if we could, and maybe, and run it past Suzanne. What would be the impact on our levy if we, you know, included the full 417?
Well, one of the comments I would say is, staff, while 417 is a gap
Yeah.
It's, it's a gap that we think is, at least I believe, is closable. In part, we, we are not, we haven't worked on the 2020 budget yet. In fact, I was just talking with Laura specifically about this an hour ago.
Yeah.
You know, this will be something that we, you know, we're going to work really hard to fund through either general fund or other sources, so that we can, we can bring that to zero.
Okay, I guess, looking at the CIP over five years, that's what I was going on.
Yeah.
Not knowing what you were
But certainly
And if there was a way to fill, close the gap
Yeah, I mean, certainly if corridor entry features is an area that isn't a priority for council anymore, you know, that now, now you're below 300,000.
And maybe we could throw in a, a small amount of local option sales tax. I don't know. I was thinking that in the current budget, there, we could maybe dedicate 50,000 from the current budget from lost. I mean, it's not going to impact the, the bottom line a whole lot. And then add another 50,000 in the fall, the next budget, the budget we're considering, the one we handed out.
In, in the CIP document itself, under loss, you know, we are proposing 350,000 for the street maintenance garage in fiscal year 19.
Right.
And $500,000 of lost funds for the street maintenance garage in 2020. So we have, we certainly could allocate more funding.
I was saying it was going up to 4, in about a pint. I, I don't know. I'm just throwing this out, so that we don't, because we're, we keep pushing it farther down the road.
Well, one of the things too, is that, you know, you could do that general obligation vote, but if you're going to do it, do it soon.
Right.
Because otherwise, the longer you put this off, the more it's going to cost. But if we can pay for something upfront all at once, that's less interest and less it's going to affect the debt levy too.
Right.
So you can, if we can save enough money to pay for it, and be done with it, you're going to save a lot on interest that we would have to take out from an obligation bond.
And, and that's where, you know, staff would suggest, we think we can head that direction. I guess, this is a question, it's a policy question for council of, do you, is 700,000 an acceptable amount to do for a GO for this project, or does the council want us to go to a citizen referendum on it, on the debt issuance? And there is precedence in Carroll County, for example, with the county's highway garage, a number of decades ago, that there was no citizen referendum for that project. They, they paid cash.
I know. We, we've had this discussion before.
So I mean, it's, it's a policy question.
I just don't like, it just, it just doesn't look right. And I, I've brought this up before. If we had even more money and could get it below the 700,000, there is a perception out there, you know, when people see that, that we are avoiding a vote. And yes, there are people out there that don't care. But my experience is, people who have talked to me, they do care. So I'm backing their point of view. And I'm representing that point of view.
So then I would say then, so we have the vote, and they vote no. Now where are we? We're still stuck. And then we go ahead and continue to allocate funds, and we push the project suit through, and now we're going to build it. Now you've completely, now you've thrown out the idea that, well, if you're not going to vote for it, we're just going to ram it down the throat. So it goes the other way. I think you're going to wander.
That's what I'm concerned about. If we all agree that it is, it's critical.
If it's a critical need, then-
Well, you hear me when I say, people didn't say, "I don't care." I don't want, I don't want people to say that I didn't care. They just said, you know, "I'm voting for you to put you in that spot, to do things that are right and good for the city and being, you know, frivolous with our money. So I'm trusting you to make good choices for us."
I had the exact same comments made to me, yeah.
I guess. I was just looking at Randy's schedule. We'd have a vote, and then if it doesn't work out, we still have time. If you've found ways, you're looking for ways in the next budget cycle. Our memo said, you know, if we can come up with ideas to fill this funding gap. So I read that and took you up on your suggestion. But I think it would, I think it would pass. If it didn't, we, we still have next budget year then to deal with it, according to Mike, yeah.
Like the mayor said, that's one thing, though. Shut down a vote, and then we still come back and fund it. We've spent the money for the vote, and now we're, seem to be going against public, public, their perception or their word. But as you were saying, though, with the corridor entry features, I'm, you know, I've been the biggest proponent of that. So I'm not opposed at all kicking that down the roadways and freeing up that 125, and for no other reason. Even with the sign with state, or with the Grand Park plan that we're doing, it'd be nice to see something there that could still tie in with the entry features. So if we delayed that and moved it down the road and freed up that money, I'd be all for that.
Well-
How about the golf cart shed? You know, it's 200. That would definitely go a long ways chopping into that 417.
Maybe it want versus a need, but they're going to frickassee me if they don't get that.
So, just to clarify, the golf cart shed does not have a funding source tied to it. So you can ax that, and it doesn't free up any money.
Money. Oh, okay. All right. That answers that question. Never mind.
Randy, I believe at one time, we checked into the history of other, so, other maintenance facilities, and correct me if I'm wrong, but none of them have ever come to a vote. Is that right? We had like 10 similar ones in the state. And I'm not saying we have to be the same as every other city. But am I correct in that? That it just has never been something that's voted, brought to a public vote before?
That's what I recall.
Yes.
I don't know for certain, because I don't have information here. But my recollection is that.
That's mine as well, and I believe that, because I think I asked it before. There's no precedent.
If that is the case, yeah. Okay, there are all sorts, right. Then why did we have it indicated in our planning session documents-
That's a good question.
-that we were going to have a citizen vote? Why then is it in our current budget we're operating under until June 30th, citizen vote?
I think it's carried through, I think it's, I think it's been carried through this whole entire time.
Then do what you, then indicate it the way, don't mislead.
And I know this is an area where we're seeking direction, because it's changed both back and forth. About two, three years ago-
Yeah, it did. All of a sudden, it was the same type of deal. And I'm in the same mindset, so everybody knows what I think.
But again, we've said this again, and again, and again, that this thing is a fluid document. It's not set in stone. We've said that repeatedly in the six years that I've been on here.
I guess I wish it wouldn't have been indicated as a citizen vote just a month ago when we had our planning session. So we kind of knew where city staff wanted this to go. And if they felt that they can find money in the next budget, then, I don't know. We, we need to be consistent, and then a month later, we've moved away. I don't, you know, whatever you want to do, I'm not comfortable with this. And when you look at Randy's schedule, you know, we could have a vote November 6th, the general election time. So there are lots of options. If you don't want to spend money, fine. It's just me, how I feel about getting to that threshold and the perception among people in the public. That's just, that's me. That's all I'm going to say.
We're looking at trying to get it, all the money put together, though, and paid for, so that we don't have to infringe on-
Yeah. Well, then find the money, the shortfall. That will be key to moving ahead.
I guess I'm curious. I read a little different way than you did, Carolyn. I know you saw it in black and white and assumed that it was set. But I guess I thought that was what you were maybe asking of us tonight as policymakers, Mike, was to give you guidance. Do we want to do a council vote? Do we want to do a citizen vote? Where do we want to go? I had understood that was the direction that you were looking for.
Yeah. I tried to be very transparent in this memo that was sent out on Thursday, that looking for a policy direction from council. Certainly, if it's to reaffirm that they want to do, continue on the path that we've set previously of a citizen vote, we'll abide by that. But if, if not, because I think we've also looked to try to find additional sources of revenue. The entry corridor features is certainly one of those. And I think if that is one where we can take those funds towards this, I think we're actually in a pretty good position, because I believe in fiscal year 2020, we can, we can find the rest of it. Now, certainly, it's going to be still a $700,000 geobond issuance. And the other thing to think about is, and to remember, we have a schematic plan, kind of back to the Library City Hall project. We have a schematic design that still hasn't been through architectural design. We may end up going through it, and it may come in higher. We hope not. It may come in lower. We may luck out like the stadium did. I don't think we do. I think it's a reasonable estimate. But it's already two years dated, Randy?
Three years now.
Three years?
Two, right now. Three in this proposed budget.
So, I mean, we're talking about a number that we've tried to inflate. But there's certainly a lot of, as we go into the design, that's going to make a huge difference, where, you know, we have the monies to go into design, and we'll go into construction in fiscal year 2020. So some of those funding gaps, we have time to figure that out. It does not have to be determined within this CIP, but we certainly are identifying that we have a potential issue in funding at this point.
Well, in the spirit of need versus want, I'm okay with kicking the 125,000 from the entry signs into, into this. Carolyn, I am opposite you. The constituents I talk with tell me do the stuff. That's what we push there to do. I respect your constituents and what you have. That's where I'm at. Whatever the rest of you have to say, I guess.
Mike, you mentioned being, okay, I noticed in the CIP, the cost is estimated at just under 5 million, 4.977. And, and so we, it's been bumped up from around 4.3. Was that just to have some cushion? I just wondered, again, in our planning documents, it was around 4.3, then noticed in CIP, it was bumped up to just under 5. So you're extrapolating-
Inflation, construction cost.
Because that's a 14% increase.
Yep.
Well, the contingency in the library was 15, right?
All right.
It was 15?
Yeah, but that, that would include the-
This also includes that, too.
I figured it was inflation, part of it, yeah.
Yep. And I believe-
4.9 is including the contingency also.
Concludes contingency, and I know we went back and forth. I don't believe it, there was, there's three components of the project. There's the main building, there's aggregate bins, and there's cold storage. I believe, I'd have to, I don't have the document with me, I believe it includes the aggregate bins, but does not include cold storage. Does that sound right, Randy, or does this include everything?
4.9 would include everything.
Okay.
Inflated for three years from the planning documents.
Is that like five per, about five per year for 15 totals? Is that where it comes from?
And I think the last year's number, I think we may have excluded the cold storage out of that number.
I can't remember.
I believe that's what we did.
I thought, I thought we deleted some of the project because of the expense.
If we got the money to hire the architect and find out what this thing's going to cost, you know, we're guessing at everything else. Why don't we spend the money, find out, maybe it'll be a lot less, and what if it's, you know, waste, you know, what if it's six and a half million? You know, just, we're just guessing at this point, until we spend the money. And then, once we find out what it's actually going to cost, then we can go like, you know, and go to a vote if we don't have enough money. And if it comes in low, then we've got enough money here. Otherwise, you're just guessing at this point.
We have enough to pay the project, and without taking bonds and paying interest on those bonds, I think, I think we're serving the citizens better.
Well, he's got, he said he's had the fund to move forward, to find out what this is going to cost.
And we do have a preliminary cost and concept plan. But this is, the phase it's in, the fiscal year 2019, would be to take it to the architectural plans themselves. We'd have a better estimate, and then potentially out to bid.
And that would be in July, according to Randy's preliminary design, July of 18. That's what you're talking, okay.
I've had no comments either way. Nobody's really mentioned anything to me. The one thing, I did talk to the maintenance guys down there, and, you know, the equipment has gotten bigger, and that's why this building, and with the equipment getting bigger, the efficiency of our workers has improved. But the question I asked them is, is there equipment out there that we're not purchasing, that's a lot bigger than what we normally have, that can make us more efficient yet? And the answer was yes. There's, you know, so we could become way more efficient if we could have this bigger equipment, but we have nowhere to store it until we put in another building.
Larger plows, I think.
Yeah.
Larger maintainers.
So there definitely is a need for this thing.
I agree. So we all think that it's a need. I think it's just down to, do we want to tell the people that we're going to do it as a council vote, or are we going to do a citizen referendum?
Do we have to make that decision now, or do we find out what, more in detail what this is going to cost before we have to worry about that?
Well, certainly, the CIP will change the intent that's out there. I mean, it's listed in here now as a council vote instead of a citizen vote. So that's a shift from previously approved CIPs, just to be clear about it. Now, we certainly, if the council's uncomfortable with that, we can change it back. That's just a policy decision.
It's hard to answer until you get those figures in.
I think we've got pretty good figures on it, to be honest, from the preliminary numbers we have. Not that it can't vary or go away from that, but I believe that's what we paid for and what these numbers are based upon. Offer them, are they not?
Well, you have a real preliminary study of it. And basically, the numbers would be based off of just square footage, use or area. The architect plan, certainly the design plan, then you can, they can get into cost and how the components of the building can come much closer to estimate cost, once those architect plans are completed. And that's the proposal for 19.
That's what I'm saying. Until we do the move that Randy says, we don't really know where we're at. Is that correct, Randy?
Well, we are where we are. I mean, based on the preliminary study, they've given us a cost. But we know, you know, that there are limits to the accuracy of the preliminary study. I mean, all it is, is eight and a half to 11 square footages. So what we really want is to get to a plan that says, this is what we want for heating, this is what we want for hip here, this is what we need for here, and then cost those out, and we get much closer on the cost. So it could, could go either way, but it gets closer. I mean, it's, it's better information, the more detailed you have with the project. So it is better information if we go that way.
Well, in a plan like this, where we're all intending to move forward with it and feel it's important, I don't have a problem investing the money to do that. Is this our normal course of business?
To have this type of item in the CIP, yes.
No, no, no. To have that depth of a study done at this point?
No.
I didn't think so. And we're going to do it, so I guess it won't hurt us. The plans aren't going to ripen up on us or anything, right, Randy?
Right.
I would make a motion to doubt the CIP, with the exception of removing the corridor entrance features and moving that money, that 125,000 from General Levy Fund to the street maintenance building.
Second thought?
I'm not sure what you were wanting.
Accepting the CIP.
Right.
But removing the 125 that's on the General Fund Levy for the corridor entrance features and allocating that 125 to the street maintenance.
Okay.
Do we remove it, or do we move it down?
Realact it.
So it'll change the General Fund Levy from 370, 375,000 in fiscal year 19 for the street maintenance garage to 500,000.
Do we wish to leave the, the street maintenance facility at the council vote, or do we want to move that to the, to a citizen referendum? We can always change it later, I guess.
Sorry, that's a motion I made.
Motion I made.
It's already a council vote.
So we do have a motion in second. Pat?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Dirks?
Yes.
Buschner?
Yes.
Seaman?
No.
Base?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Thank you. Our final report is the fiscal year 2016, 2019 annual financial statement audit.
Mike?
I'll pass it to Laura.
Well, I'm going to do a very abbreviated review of this, not like we've had, or unlike, Jennifer Walkup has been here, and she has gone through this report with us. We've just looked four or five years now. We're going to step backwards a year with our fiscal 16, 17 annual financial report. It was prepared by, or the audit was performed by Feldman and Company CPAs. They've been doing our audit for a number of years. So in this report, the city received an unqualified opinion with no reportable, required reportable condition. An unqualified opinion is an independent auditor's judgment that the city's financial records and statements are fairly and appropriately presented, that is in accordance with GAAP or generally accepted accounting principles. An unqualified opinion is the most type, and the most desirable type of auditor's report that you want to get. To briefly walk through the audit report, starting on page nine, begins the management's discussion and analysis. This information is prepared by city staff that basically is a good summary of the rest of the report, and tells the story of what has gone on, or the changes, the main activities and changes that have occurred from last fiscal year. So I would definitely read through that section, because I try to prepare that in a way that makes it more understandable from somebody who does not have a very good, or does not have much experience with governmental accounting and the way financial reports are put together for a city. On page 20 and 21 starts to go through the main part of the financial report. On page 20, we've got what's called the statement of activities in that position. This tries to explain and show, is the city, in essence- to explain and show is the city in essence, better off or worse off from the prior year. On page, so exhibit A on page 21, you'll show that our change in cash balance actually went up in both what we call our governmental type of funds, our activities and our proprietary. So the difference between two types of funds, the governmental activities are everything that's not the proprietary. So if we would take away water, sewer and stormwater, which is all our proprietary or our enterprise funds, that's all one separate category, then everything else is called a governmental type of activities. Then exhibits B and D will break down the governmental type of activities into more, what we tend to talk about a little bit more in our daily conversations of funds. We break it down by the general fund, the road use tax fund, capital projects funds, as opposed to, just break it out a little bit more. You can see a little bit more what's going on each type of those funds. And then exhibit D breaks it out more for the enterprise funds. What's going on in the water fund, what's going on in the sewer fund, in the stormwater fund. Then you get into on page 29, the notes. It gives a more of a narrative of the exhibits that were presented before and goes into some greater detail of the exhibits A through D. And the last thing I will point out, and then the council has questions, is starting on page 77 is our schedule of findings and question costs. This is a section that's required of every governmental accounting, our governmental audit. And there are these number of items that the auditors are required to look at for the city and then they've noted, are we in compliance with this? I would call this more the compliance section. Are we in compliance with this? Are we in compliance with that? And we are. The one thing it seems like we get noted on is excess balances. And that means, according to the governmental rules, it's saying that we have balances in some of our funds that are in excess of the dispersment. There's a number of reasons why we would have that happen. Mainly would be because we are trying to save to do some bigger people projects. And let's see the other items. We did have one fund in fiscal 17 that ended with a deficit balance. That was our special revenue urban renewal downtown TIF fund. If you recall, we're using that fund to help, to help finance the downtown corridor project, street skate projects. And we are doing an internal loan with the water utility fund. We had payments that were set up to repay the water fund in excess of what we are anticipating to receive from the downtown TIF area this last fiscal year. That should get corrected in fiscal 18. So we should not see a deficit balance in that fund at the end of 18. Like I said, I wasn't planning on going through any line by line or item by item unless somebody's got a specific question about something that's through, that's been reported in here. Jenny, Jennifer does apologize for not being able to make it. She had some scheduling conflicts that did not allow for her to be here at any of our council meetings here in January. And then they are deep into tax season starting in February. But I'm sure she'd be more than willing to take a question if council would like to contact her at our office.
Any other questions for Laura? If not, I'll need a motion to accept the fiscal year 2016, 2017 annual financial statement audit.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion in a second. Haley?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Base?
Yes.
Katz?
Yes.
Flaschner?
Yes.
Dirks?
Yes.
Motion's approved.
Thank you. I trust everyone has read the committee reports and the monthly activity reports. I'm going to let Mike talk about the water main break since he had brought that up. He would like to make some comments on that. Are there any comments for the city council? Mike, go ahead.
I have two things just to bring up. First, staff has begun discussions with the Carroll Public Library Foundation about a possible contract. Now, since the foundation's December 13th letter, where they stated if the council needs or desires a more formal agreement, we're prepared to enter into such agreement. The foundation's learned that entering into a written contract with the city could subject the foundation to the Iowa open records law. And today, without such a contract, they're not subject to Iowa open records. Both the foundation and the city of Carroll has received written requests for information under Iowa open records related to the foundation's current fundraising efforts. And specifically, there's concern on the part of the foundation that they'd be required to release information, in particular donor information who have requests to be anonymous. And additionally, the foundation's grant making requests that then could hurt their ability to fundraise. Staff is continuing to discuss this with the foundation and our city attorney to see what, if any, option could allow the city to enter into a contract with the foundation to protect their fundraising efforts. But I just wanted to bring the council kind of up to date where we're at and the discussions we've had up to this point. The second thing I just wanted to bring up was the water main break that occurred last week. And, you know, really, it is the amount of water that we had through that break. It's kind of amazing to see that the businesses are opening, they're, they're continuing to do their cleanup work and get back open. And I think there's, there's certainly some disruptions with some businesses, but I think most, maybe only one of them is not open at some capacity. We did have our insurance adjuster working with ICAP in town. We've met with every single business last week. One of the things, just for council's information, we have asked that everyone work through their insurance company. And obviously, at some point, there may be discussions between their insurance company and ICAP about how to settle any potential liability. The adjuster made it very clear that they're not in a position to pay claims or deny any claims right now. It's more of an information gathering point for the city and ICAP. But I do want to say publicly again, just, just hats off to our staff. You know, we had the water department, sanitary sewer department, our streets department, all out there, working hard in pretty frigid, cold conditions. I know I wasn't going to beat out of that hole, just to be honest. And so I just really applaud their work and frankly, the work of the business owners to get back and open. So just really appreciate, appreciate everyone's efforts on that. So thank you, Randy and your team.
Yeah, that was a very cold day to be out there and, you know, to get it done in 10 hours and get that repaired. Outstanding work. Appreciate everything they do.
Thank you.
Anything else? If not, I'll need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.